Right into it. So essentially, these blocks are based off their numbers, but I wanted to kind of go through and talk about what you're looking at on those essentially those two attached pages. So kind of going back to just touch base with everybody, where, where, where are we currently at? So right now, we're charging for an inside the city residential is thirty nine fifty. Is our base connection fee. We allow four thousand gallons of water in that base fee. And two things where we are is that one, we haven't updated our fee since the study was done back in twenty fourteen. And our water allowance is really high. For most part, we don't sell that much water, but if we did allow for every resident to take the four thousand gallons, we can produce that amount of water, but we would lose money beyond hand over fist with that concept. And it's just not very sensible for us to be doing that. Uh, for both water, uh, conserving water and for essentially keeping our water system afloat. So one of the other things I would point out quickly on here is where it says meter multiplier. Um, you'll see in the next slide I got highlighted, but currently we don't use a meter multiplier. We use what's called EDUs, which gets confusing because EDUs are actually for equivalent dwelling unit, not really for water. So where are we wanting to go? So we've ran the numbers, we, you know, we, we talked about making um, short term rentals commercial. We decided to hold off on that and kind of see how things work. So by the time we all got done with, with essentially what we're looking at, the new base rate we are looking to start off at is forty seven fifty six. And so you can see on the meter multiplier, that's what we're going to use now because that's an American Water Works Association standard. And that's how we do multiplication. So if say a commercial has a one inch meter, the rate essentially is multiplied by one point four to come up with it. You'll also notice I highlighted on their, the proposed water allowance, which we will be dropping, we would be dropping from four thousand to two thousand gallons if the council approves it. So when you take that information, um, the two thousand gallons and start looking at our actual usages. Uh, the first one is simply, uh, essentially is inside this residential during the summer months. Um, most people are using what's about three point nine units of water. So that's about three thousand nine hundred gallons. So we just, I just rounded it up and saved four thousand gallons. So what their bill would be, would be the base rate of the forty seven fifty six, and then they would be essentially getting two more units of water in the tier one category, which would be sixty six fifty six would be their total amount of water they would be being essentially beginning. That's our typical residential usage. In the winter time, our typical usage is less than two units. So most people would just be paying, paying the base rate, which would be forty seven fifty six. And then I threw some numbers in there to kind of show the outside usage, um, which would be, they pay essentially twenty percent more, so they would be paying a sixty eight, forty eight would be their base rate. And then their, their uh, consumption rate per unit would be eleven dollars and forty cents. So in their case, like during the summer months, they used four units total, they get two in the base and then they buy two more. And so they would be looking at ninety one, twenty eight. One of the things that somebody says, well, you know, what, what about, you know, the price? It's going to really cost a lot of money. Well, under this, a person really does have a control on how much they spend as far as their water bill goes by the amount of water they use. And so typical households use about four thousand gallons. Um, but you can control that by deciding to water your lawn, setting up a swimming pool, hot tub, and all that stuff uses extra water. So essentially you're paying for that or you cut back. And which is not very popular, but you let the, the grass turn brown in the summer and put water in it and you can then lower your water bill some. We do have the tiered approach shown in here now, which is the tier one, tier two, and tier three. Um, we went with the three tier system. Uh, and you can see it varies for inside the residential areas from nine dollars and fifty cents a unit to twelve twenty five. And so what the way it works, so people are understanding is once you hit the five thousand gallon mark. So every, every unit in that between two thousand and five thousand is charged at nine fifty. But then when you go to, when you hit this, that five thousand mark, so between five and six thousand, you'll be paying the eleven dollars. So it'll be nine fifty, nine fifty, pretty much nine fifty, eleven dollars, then eleven dollars. So it doesn't just switch you all the way around.
Dan, would you like us to ask questions now or later?
You jump in with questions so I can answer them now. It works beautifully.
Uh, would those numbers be prorated? So if I use three point five, would I be charged the point five or does it get rounded up?
It gets rounded up because we read in currently in thousands.
Okay.
So and that's why we kept the numbers pretty, pretty plain that way as far as your, your per unit. Now it also does those also, it rounds up, but it also rounds down.
Okay. Um, I will make, I guess, one other comment, and this goes to council. Um, it was my understanding that the average household used two units of water throughout the year. Um, I'm, I, I know we've seen this a bit before, but I'm slightly concerned that the normal household will have to be paying for normal, and in my head, a normal household is occupied by two people, I don't want to say normal people, um, but by two people that use, that shower and do laundry and have a dishwasher, I don't know. Um, that and I would have liked to see that our water bill for that person or two people would be covered in our base rate, that they wouldn't have to pay additional in the summer months. Um, so I'm happy with we, where we are here, but I would like to keep an eye on that for maybe down the road if we need to tweak it a little bit.
Well, and actually on that, that's a good caveat I can throw it in. One of the things that is going to come out in the final report after adoption, everything is a lot of recommendations too. And one of the recommendations I have is that we make sure, one, we do our, our increases essentially every year versus these big jumps.
Mm hmm.
Um, and that's kind of here's the future rate kind of concept, looking at it by doing an increase and increase to set it. Uh, essentially we set it at three point three nine. That's based off a consumer price index. This is a little different than what we use for the SDCs because SDCs, um, essentially our materials were operations and maintenance. The consumer price index essentially brings in cost of of the people, the materials, everything, it kind of clumps it together. Now, with that being said, we are looking at a, at a hopefully after about three years of, of running our rates of essentially doing not a full blown rate study, but after three years, we want to dive back into it and do essentially kind of a minor uh, analysis of it to make sure that we are on track with our budget. And we are on track with the rates meeting the budget line. So, so at, at, at that three year point to me is where we can take a good look at things and see, you know, what works, what doesn't work. Um, there was, you know, still kind of some talk about with the STRs and that'll be a good time to essentially to reevaluate that as well. So, so that's what is going to be one of our recommendations for, for when it goes to in front of you guys for the adoption.
Thanks, Dan.
Yeah.
Hey, Dan.
I just want to, I'm sorry, uh, I just want to follow up on Jenna's point because I, uh, do. I, I would agree that I kind of blazed over on that, uh, how much the typical household uses, uh, so I do think, I think the numbers you're presenting are, are, are going to work, um. But they, they do in effect, uh, raise the rate twice from the typical residence perspective, they're going to see not only that the, uh, the actual bill goes up, but the, um, the base allowance goes down. And so on that particular piece, the base allowance going down, you, you mentioned it, our current allowance, uh, is really way too generous. Uh, and I'm assuming you're basing that on what other communities do?
No, we're basing it literally on the numbers, the, the, the cost of producing water and delivery.
Okay, well.
And that's, and that's kind of two is also Jerry's, the balancing point. So like if you decide you want to raise the, the amount allotted water up.
Yep.
So that doesn't, we then have to actually raise up the amount of the base fee. And so that's where the balancing act essentially is where it's at.
Well, I mean, I'm just, uh, I, I like that slide, uh, where you compared us to a couple of other communities, uh, but I don't recall without seeing it in front of me. Did that touch on, uh, their base allowances as well?
Um, no, because I found their base allowances are all over the spectrum.
Okay.
Um, I see some that have actually, I think it was, I'd have to double check, I think it was Arch Cape doesn't have a base or one of them didn't have a base rate that I looked at. It was just purely per unit after, well, let me rephrase that. They have a base rate fee, but they didn't have a base rate amount of water in the base.
Right, okay.
And so they just went through it. And as you can see, you know, I started actually honestly on this, how to compare us because it is like comparing apples and asparagus.
Okay.
It, it's all over the spectrum and the price per thousand gallons, as you can see, like Arch Cape, that is not a mistype. That is a hundred and fifty dollars per thousand gallons, once you breach a certain point. And so it is, it's really hard. And I looked at some trying to, because I also tried to dive into on each at one of them, what are they doing for with their, essentially their budget? Because their budget's what dictates their water rates. And a lot of them, I'm not seeing actually any heavy, not heavy, I wouldn't say heavy maintenance, but I'm not seeing any actual like line replacement projects or anything. It's just kind of like, here it is. That's all we're doing is essentially kind of holding our pipes that we have in the ground now. Where we tacked on, you know, almost three hundred thousand dollars, um, a year to be able to go after water projects and start replacing our lines. And not, I'm not going to say be proactive, but actually doing the maintenance that we need to be doing.
Okay.
Well, one of, one of the things this does is it also encourages conservation. Um, and I think that's a really good thing. And it looks like based on comparison with the other cities, uh, even with the additional, uh, two thousand or the two thousand into four thousand, we're still within the ballpark. We're, we're about the same range as the other three cities. So it seems like it makes sense.
Hey, Dan, can I, can I jump in, Dan?
Yeah.
Uh, good afternoon, everybody. This is Tim Tice, Oregon Association of Water Utilities. Uh, I've been working with Dan on this, on this great study. Um, something that two, two points want to make about the allowance. Um, considering the eighteen dollars and eighty one cents to deliver a thousand gallons to the tap, if you provide four thousand gallons of allowance, uh, the minimum base rate would be seventy four dollars. Uh, that's just to cover the cost. The second reason why we lowered it down to the two thousand is because it really did align up with the winter rates as most people are using between one thousand six hundred gallons per month and one thousand nine hundred gallons per month for the single family residential, uh, users. Uh, it does jump a little bit, uh, and it goes to about three thousand nine hundred gallons in the summer months for the average single family user. So essentially, um, the councilman is correct, it's, it's almost can be perceived as a double whammy. But looking strictly from the budget side of it, um, we either would have to significantly increase the base rate to seventy four dollars to cover that delivery cost, which immediately would, would not be considered a fair approach. Uh, what we're looking to do is have, uh, whatever amount of water is used is paid for at an equal, equally price per unit. Thanks, Dan.
Hey, Dan, just, just so I can remember a couple of things. So this is per month, I'm assuming.
Yeah, we will be billing quarterly for.
Okay, that was my, yeah, that was my next question. We bill quarterly. And the second question I have is, uh, what's considered summer months? I mean, is it just based on weather or is it based on?
Essentially, it's, it's where we're looking is typically summer months is, you know, your latter part of June, July, August, and September. And then it's when rain starts coming in that we see a huge drop in the usage. And it's, and a lot of it is for irrigation systems.
So we're really talking about maybe two months or three months.
Yeah.
Summer usage.
I, I can tell you, you know, I can't tell you what, of course, people here in Manzanita are using. Uh, I know what they're using, but I can't tell you. But like personally, I can tell you, at my house, a family of, uh, of four um, with two teenagers, so you can imagine that water usage. Um, we still use about four thousand gallons a month. And so, and that's like I said, teenagers that like to run my water heater empty. So so two people typically in Manzanita should be using probably right around two thousand gallons of water, unless they're out watering the yard and doing a lot of agricultural type of watering.
Sure, yeah, I just was, uh, curious what, um, you know, what months we expect people to have that, uh?
Yeah, it's mainly the summer months. And I, I think what really obscures that number honestly, Brad, is the short term rental numbers.
Mm hmm. How so, Dan?
What's that, Linda?
How, how so? How does the short term rental skew?
I think it, I think it obscures the numbers a little bit for us because essentially, well, short term rentals and second homes, because you're seeing a lot more usage by those type of homes and those people, uh, the short term rental folks and stuff in the summer months than you are in the winter months.
Um, Dan, I have a question. You, you mentioned that these bills are going to come out quarterly. Uh, at what point do we, do we think they'll start? What, what's, what's the first, uh, month hit going to be?
Well, if it all, it all depends on the council. If it's adopted and approved in July.
In July.
Yeah, yeah, correct me if I'm wrong, Leila, but the, if essentially if it's put into the July meeting, then the rates would be taking effect in August, correct?
Okay, okay.
That's correct.
Okay.
So, let's see.
Hey.
That was my, my last, my slides. So is there any other questions I can answer for you guys at this time?
I just have to say, Dan, this is much clearer than the exercise we went through before, and I really appreciate the clarity of the data.
Yeah, I honestly, it's hard, especially because we've gone so long with the rates.
Right.
And as you guys know, I asked a lot of questions from you, um, short term rental stuff and things like that. And so I think like I said, in three years by doing this, this will help really cut down a lot of the questions. We'll be able to address the, the smaller issues and be able to get through it a lot quicker.
So, so Dan, just in recap, it, it looks like the residential rates are going up eight dollars and six cents. And the commercial are going up seventeen dollars and fifty seven cents. Um, and we're looking at starting, uh, this, this new billing rate in August if the council makes the approval at the July council meeting. Is that all correct?
That, that sounds about correct.
Okay. And one of the things that's going to be built into this system is a revisit every year. Um, you're not automatically raised, you're not on an automatic yearly raise, are you? Uh, or do you revisit and we go through this process again next year?
No, we should be able to for the next three years, essentially is go by the price index and do an increase and uh, the, what the idea is to be able to do is we increase the rates right before the July budget year, essentially on our master fee schedule. So those numbers will be seen by you guys and the budget committee every year.
Okay, perfect.
For inflation only.
Yeah.
Okay, inflation only.
Yeah.
And then we'll do a major review in three years, is that?
That is correct. That's, that's the goal. That's the goal.
Yeah.
Okay, are there any other questions or, or comments?
Yeah, I just want to reiterate, I think Jenna got this from you, Dan, I want to make sure. So if somebody goes a smidge over the, uh, allowed base, it gets rounded down.
That is correct. So if you used, if you use thirty, three thousand, three hundred gallons, when the guys go out and read it, well, digital ties reading, the, the system will just see it as a three.
Okay.
If you use three thousand, seven hundred gallons, then the system would see it as four thousand, because it would roll, it would round up.
So we should be, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think, I think we'll be, so Dan, the projects that this is going to fund are primarily maintenance of the water system?
This is going to fund maintenance projects. So essentially what it's going to do is it's going to fill in a part of our water line replacement funds, and that's what we were talking about, the project list.
Right.
And before, a lot of that was coming strictly out of the water construction fund. And which is meant for, you know, water improvement, new construction, things like that. And that's what you use it for. So like when we replace a four inch asbestos concrete main with a six inch or eight inch, part of that would be new water construction costs. And then also it would be maintenance because we are replacing and repairing service lines and an old main. So that's why we take it. And essentially projects then, water main projects would be a sixty percent out of water construction fund, forty percent out of the water maintenance fund. And I went through, a lot of cities do a seventy thirty and a lot of them do a sixty forty. And I've talked with OAWU about it. I've talked with some other water operators. And the sixty forty was the best scenario for, I think, for us as far as doing the right appropriations of funds.
Excellent, thank you.
Mm hmm.
Any other closing comments or questions? Well, as, as usual, Dan, you did a great job. Thank you very much for being here.
And we'll be bringing you the resolution in July.
Sounds good.
All right. Thank you, everybody. I hope you have a good day.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dan.
Yeah.
Okay, the, um, moving on, the next item on the agenda is the short term rental survey. And I believe, uh, Linda, I hand this over to you at this point.
That would be great.
Okay.
Um, so Dan, if you could take down your
screen.
There we go, good. And I'm assuming Joe has access to the screen, uh, putting something up on the screen. I, I just, I just want to say I've been observing the short term rental committee for the last probably six months. And as they begun the, the process of evaluating the survey, uh, you, this, Joe and her team will give you the specific numbers. But I've been really impressed with the seriousness with which they've taken the data analysis to make sure that as they look at the data, they're providing as accurate as possible a reflection of the survey that the city, that the, the citizens of the city, uh, have provided. I encourage the, the council to ask a lot of questions. There's a lot of detail that you'll see. Um, try not to focus on solutions. That's going to come in the next phase. I think Joe will be able to talk a little bit about that. But understanding the data and what the data says to us is really important. So with that, I'm going to turn the, uh, mic over to Joe and Joe, if you could take it from there.
Okay, um, I, we do not have a screen share access. I don't need it, but, uh, Patrick and Anna Palm do. So whoever's doing that, Nancy, if you can, or Nina, can you give them, uh, share screen access? Um, first of all, we got over six hundred responses. I find that astounding. Um, and I, I want to thank the community for taking the time to, uh, fill out the survey because it took people an average, uh, of about eight or nine minutes. It took some people half an hour. So again, thanks to the community. I also want to thank, uh, the members of the short term rental committee that worked on it. And it was pretty much everyone, although, um, Patrick, Cheryl, Jill, Anna Palm and Michael took a lion's share of the role by analyzing the results um, that Patrick and Anna Palm will be presenting to you. But also again, want to thank the others for, uh, from the committee who provided input into the questions themselves. Um, before they begin, I just want to give you a couple caveats. Um, somebody asked if we verified that a respondent who said they lived in a particular area actually lived in that area. Uh, no, we took people at their words. Um, did we differentiate between a part timer who is here sixty percent of the year with someone who visited their home once a year? No, we didn't do that either. Um, do we realize that it's likely that people that are most bothered by STRs are going to be more likely to leave a comment than people that aren't? Um, this is probably true, but it doesn't make their opinions or ideas any more or less valid. Um, are we listening only to full timers? Are we giving a biased voice to owners of STRs because so many of them responded? Are we ignoring part timers? Uh, no, no, and no. Uh, we parse the results in a lot of different ways, by areas, by full time, by part time. Um, we wanted to see if there was much of a difference in results. And you'll hear more from Patrick and Anna Palm about this. Um, but our aim was to listen to all the members of the community. We're not professional analytical researchers. And we don't intend to continue this analysis for the next couple of years. Um, we're not trying to win the Nobel Peace Prize. Um, our goal is simply this. We want to identify issues that can improve relations between SCR guests and whoever lives nearby. Our focus is not how many are upset versus how many are not upset. Um, it is what are the issues that are prevalent and that we can control? And what are our plans to begin to work on that? One final caveat, it's really tempting, as Linda said, to listen to the results and to jump to solutions, whether in your head or verbally. And we ask that you not do that at this time. Our next steps as a committee will be to take the results of the survey, discuss some of the common themes, look at all the suggestions and comments and set priorities. And then come up with some ideas to improve and meet with the staff to discuss implementation feasibility, feasibility. Uh, then we'll recommend to you, the council, changes to the ordinances or policies that we think can do that. Um, and with that, I'm going to turn it over to Patrick. And he's going to give you the, uh, qualitative, quantitative, I can't get it right.
Quantitative.
Yeah. Go ahead, Patrick.
I was going to say thanks to a lot of the people who are part of this, uh, uh, and all the folks on the call, but that's been covered. But I still appreciate everybody's help very much. Um, I will say this, uh, the survey, uh, took place in April. We had a significant amount of time, uh, prior to that with community outreach, outreach. Uh, we posted flyers up on boards along La Nida and at the grocery stores, et cetera. We went to the library and, um, went to some meetings, trying to get everybody involved, uh, and kind of with a, a pre-warning, making sure that those who were interested in, uh, responding, uh, knew about it. I think we did a pretty good job. Um, you'll see that, that in the, the numbers coming up. I'm going to lead you through, um, a dozen pages, which, uh, are possibly, uh, what we could see um, with council's approval, uh, being something placed up on the website, uh, to share with the community, uh, the results. um, with council's approval, uh, being something placed up on the website, uh, to share with the community, uh, the results, uh, of their voices. Um, so we're going to go through that today. It begins, uh, with just a single page about, uh, who took place, uh, where short-term rentals are, uh, and the data itself, and then it goes into, uh, eleven slides, pages with slides, uh, for eleven different topics. Uh, before I begin, are there any questions? Okay, so I'm going to see if I can share my screen. All right. So, um, uh, before I get into the slides, I'm just going to, uh, show a, a little bit of, um, uh, the map that was given to folks who took this survey. Can everybody see the map?
Yes.
Okay. So, um, as we went through the process of kind of, uh, assessing the data, we, uh, met with, uh, a person in the community who is extremely, um, knowledgeable in, uh, research and data analytics and, uh, um, uh, Adele Spigman, and, um, she, uh, provided some great insights. She forced me to work harder on the data, think about the data. Uh, there will be questions that come from you all as you have them, um, share them. I'll do my best to, to get them to you. We may not have enough time today to get through them all, so we'll always be here to respond when this is all done. The core data that we have, the beta data that we have will be available to those, uh, who want it. When we were doing this, uh, Adele said, hey, you know, you should take this map, and let's use the map to say, hey, where did people come from? And, you know, uh, what, what do we know about them? So this is the map that, uh, people identified with when they took the survey, and as that pan out a little bit, it's going to get kind of small. But the idea is each circle shows how many people responded from each neighborhood. And within that circle, it shows, you know, where they came from. So green, uh, are full-time, uh, residents and respondents. Yellow is our part-time folks, and yellow are the short-term rental owners. And just as a, just as a reminder, since it was a couple months ago, there were basically five categories that you could identify with. You could identify as a full-time resident, you could identify as a part-time resident, you could identify as a short-term rental owner, uh, or a short-term rental agent, and you could identify the fact that you actually weren't in Manzanita. We set this up as a control question in essence, uh, in case somebody from outside of the area, uh, you know, this, there was no way to lock down this, the access to this link or to the survey. Anybody could have taken it. So we asked them, you know, where are you from? They would, uh, some people provided addresses, some people said, identified as non-residents. Um, there ended up being fifty-six of those. So, um, those were removed from the data so that we could focus on the folks, uh, who are, uh, a part of this community. And as you pan out, um, you can see, if you, if you have really good reading glasses, but I'll, I'll, I'll show a table actually after this that makes it a little easier to read. But just in summary, you know, we basically have, uh, you know, a hundred and twenty-three folks, uh, and actually, real quick, we, we break down the city, you know, basically into the La, La Nita corridor, um, you know, where kind of all of our commercial groups are, and then kind of into the quadrants, if you will, kind of, uh, northwest, southwest, northeast, southeast. Uh, and then, uh, we also have the Highlands, and then we have these yellow areas for the unincorporated parts of Manzanita. Um, so interestingly, uh, two-thirds of respondents came from kind of our high-density STR area along the beach. Um, La Nita divides north and south, uh, you know, kind of Third Street, Carmel, Neocarne, that divides, uh, kind of east and west, you know? Um, this was just a random choice, just to find ways to, and, and, you know, we, we didn't really know at the beginning whether this would help us or not. We didn't know, uh, sentiments would be different based on where you were, but we, uh, had this available to us if we needed it. Um, sixty-four folks responded from La Nita, uh, corridor, uh, ninety from kind of the southeast region, a hundred and twenty, actually, the greatest area was from this kind of southeast, uh, southwest area, a hundred and thirty-two, and we had about, uh, six folks from Highlands and, and fifty from the, the three unincorporated areas. So just any questions about this in general? Pretty straightforward.
Hey, Patrick? Just, just a heads up, I'm colorblind and, uh, green are real, I know I'm in the minority, but red and green are tough colors, so, uh, I don't know, just, just a comment.
That is a, that is a great comment, and that's very insensitive of, uh, me to not
I just can't tell the difference between the, uh, full-time and the STR owner, so.
Well, that's what the tables are for coming up, and I'll, I'll, I'll dig into it. I just wanted, for the folks who are visual, I just kind of wanted to give a, a big picture view of where they're from, but I'm going to show you now, for the folks who, uh, don't like, uh, graphs so much, let's take a look at it a little differently. So this might help Brad a little bit more, but, um, basically, this is showing, you know, the bulk of the folks came from our beach area, uh, inland, you know,
We're not seeing, we're not seeing anything.
Oh, sorry, let me share this again.
There we go, there we go.
So this is a, this is a table version, um, uh, Brad, which basically showed, uh, the same information. So when you add up all the respondents that were in those little circles, they add up to, um, folks who add, who uh, answered questions on the data added up to five hundred and eighty-nine. We broke them down, uh, by regions. We, in the survey, they were kind of a letter. We kind of created a, a neighborhood name for them. We actually had one person who didn't even, who didn't want to share, uh, exactly where they were from, so we respected that, and we created Z for them. Um, and we broke them down by how many came in full-time, two hundred and twenty-five. Uh, we have six hundred and thirty-three residents. That's a, a, a pretty impressive, uh, cut, actually. Uh, part-timers, one sixty-five, and short-term rentals, one ninety-nine. We have, uh, two hundred and sixty-three short-term rentals. So once again, um, pretty, pretty good cut of the folks, um, who have, uh, interest in this process. Is that a, is that a little easier to, to kind of follow, Brad?
Yeah, great, thanks. I didn't know that was coming, so thank you.
Oh, no worries, no worries. Um, I'll also want to share just a little bit on the data. Um, I'm, I've got all kinds of information on data that I'm not going to share. Uh, it's, uh, available upon request, but I'm not going to bore you all. But, uh, for, um, you know, people talking about qualitative and quantitative data, I'm not going to use those kind of big fancy words, I'm just going to talk about numbers and words. So I, I'm the one who's, uh, giving you information on the numbers, and so for the folks who answered questions about the numbers, uh, we had five hundred and eighty-nine responses. Um, that's what my, uh, presentation will show. These are called, these are the quantitative aspects, the math aspects. Uh, Anna Palm is going to be talking about the qualitative or the comments, the words, the commentary that came out. Uh, actually, these are the total responses, and six hundred and fifty-six people responded, and, uh, these are the folks who responded to, uh, comments. It turns out there was a number of folks who, um, either were not inside Manzanita or who didn't respond, uh, to, uh, the, the data elements, and so that's why we have a little bit of a difference. Um, there were fifty-six non-residents, six agents who are not included in this number, and five who, um, who only responded, uh, with comments and, and not necessarily with the data. So that's, that's a, uh, kind of a a real high level about how we got from total respondents of five, uh, six fifty-six to the five eighty-nine that you're going to see throughout this review. Any questions about that? Once again, it'll get easier once they get past this page. This is just, this is just, uh, if you just take a deep breath on this, you can come back to this at any time. The, the following pages are all very simple graphs and, uh, very simple charts. But, um, in terms of short-term rentals, um, I just wanted to, also, we also have some kind of, uh, visuals on the short-term rentals. There are two hundred and sixty-three of them. We took the data from the city website, uh, as of April, uh, which showed two hundred and sixty-two. It's just a timing issue. Um, it changes over time. Um, but, uh, the bulk of our short-term rentals are in the, you know, the southwest and the northwest part of the city, uh, three, the three blocks from the beach. And, um, you know, we also have, uh, in the La Nita corridor, we have seventeen, and then we have about, you know, seventy-five inland. They add up to that number. And, um, we'll be talking more about this as we go along. But I figured just to begin, just getting a little, uh, information about where the short-term rentals are, and where are the folks who responded. Um, any questions before we begin there?
Um, Patrick, I'm, I'm curious on the average STR size, is that, uh, guests, like where South Beach, it says ten, is that the average homes in South Beach hold ten occupants? Is that what that number is?
Yeah, good, great question. It's, it's specific to, uh, the number of short-term rentals that are in that neighborhood.
Okay, okay.
Right. So, so like, um, so in your neighborhood, if you're like in the inland kind of area, there's twenty-seven short-term rentals kind of, you know, uh, south of La Nita, above Third Street. Of those twenty-seven, they are listed with occupancies that can range from, I think, I don't know, whatever, four to six up to, uh, a higher number? So I basically took all those, added them up, and divided them by twenty-seven to come up with an average.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Yeah. It, you know, it, uh, you know, the only takeaway really is the La Nita corridor were smaller than others, uh, at around eight. And then the other takeaway was, I, I just thought these numbers would be smaller in general. I mean, overall, uh, short-term rentals in Manzanita, uh, can accommodate up to six point nine guests. Having heard the water discussion, this is, uh, definitely going to, uh, lead to a lot of water revenue, I would imagine. These were, you know, so just, uh, these are just facts based on, uh, data that, uh, that Judy, uh, keeps track of for the city. With, unless there are, uh, uh, any questions about just kind of the starting place, the who's, the where's, um, I can get into the results of the survey. That sound good? So the first question was, uh, what, uh, you know, which of the following best describes you? We've gone into that. Um, these are the people that were, uh, responding, and this is how they, um, discussed, we discussed that in the table above. So we also asked them, you know, where is your home located? Um, you know, basically, along the beach where our, our major contributors. These are just, uh, bar graph presentate, uh, present, uh, presentations of exactly what we've, we've gone over. This is a format that is pretty easy for, uh, readers to use, which is, like I said, this could be something we could use on the website itself. So after people identified who they were, they began, um, to tell us a little bit about themselves. Now, um, when we were going through the process of, uh, analyzing the data, um, people in the community said, you, you know, we got data based on the whole population. Um, it was easy to share data on the whole population, but, uh, arguably, that skews, you know, how do the people who live here full-time really feel? So, um, it was, uh, a suggestion was made to me to make sure that each one of these has, uh, definitely shares the full-time residents' perspective, and that is the case. Every single, um, slide that we have, uh, leads with, uh, the full-time residents. Uh, and we actually have breakdowns of other groups, uh, of interest as well, but we wanted to make sure that the, the folks that, um, we are very concerned about and want to make sure that they're heard, uh, are leads in these. And so when, uh, we asked the full-time residents, you know, about density near them, about, you know, how many, uh, short-term rentals are you aware of in your area? Uh, they, they, you know, the, the bulk of the folks kind of said, you know, about two to three, others, you know, four or more. Um, as you look at the part-timers, um, if you compare them, um, the, the highest, for full-timers, the highest kind of group was two to three for some reason. Uh, uh, part-timers were like, well, I, I, I'm only noticing one, so, uh, you know, about half of them. So it was just a, just kind of an FYI, but once again, an interesting way to take a look at a question, and we can break it down by who responded, or, you know, um, which, you know, which area they responded from. So, um, just kind of some FYI slides. So, um, now we get to, you know, kind of what we wanted to learn a little bit more about. What in general, um, are your experiences with nearby short-term rental, uh, visitors within poor houses? So we're trying to get a feel for, not, you know, the stories they'd heard from different neighborhoods, but how, how is it impacting them? What we were heard from full-time residents was, uh, it was generally negative, one T three percent of the time, and, uh, you know, seventy-seven percent of the time, uh, it was not negative. So, um, this, uh, was, um, information provided by them as we dig deeper into the other groups. Um, we see that this negative number goes from this twenty-three from the full-timers down to twelve when we expand out to part-time, uh, residents. Um, we didn't ask the question of short-term rental owners, we had a pretty good feeling, um, you know, that they might have be skewed in one direction versus another. So, um, you know, I'm just going to add another layer to this. Um, this, this was kind of interesting, so we were like, well, I wonder how this breaks down into uh, neighborhoods. And, you know, one of the things that we're trying to figure out for the future, we're not talking about the day, but the data will help us, um, think this through, is, you know, if there are areas that are troublesome areas or areas of density, where should we send them? And, and, you know, people talk about, well, the, uh, commercial zones, the R four zones are the least dense, those are probably, you know, common areas to consider. So what, what was interesting is when you looked at this, um, the folks who had the highest negativity numbers were, uh, in the La Nita corridor, thirty-two. Um, you know, not a majority, but the highest of the folks who responded. Um, the second highest was inland, actually, uh, kind of south of La Nita in that southeast kind of quadrant. And what was interesting was the highest density areas, when you put both the beach areas together, um, basically from one side of Manzanita, north to all the way down to south, the negative number was fifteen. Um, I guess people might have assumed that the highest density areas would have the highest negatives. In this case, it wasn't the case. Any, any questions about, any questions about that?
This is full-time people, not total people, right?
Yeah, this is, so right up here, uh, this is the neighborhood detail of full-time only. So this isn't skewed by short-term rental owners, this isn't skewed by, uh, part-timers. Just, just kind of fact-based, based on the the, the residents that we heard from, over two hundred. Any questions or comments? Okay. So, the, when we were going through the process of creating this survey, um, a person, um, spoke up, uh, from the community and said, you know, I'd like to know more about livability. Let's, let's have an open question on livability that we discuss later by Anna Palm, but we also put it, uh, in this form, how does it, how do short-term rentals near you affect your livability? Um, nineteen percent of full-timers said it greatly, uh, affected them. Um, when you take a look, uh, at part-timers, it goes down to seven percent. Um, when you take a look at full-timers by neighborhood, which neighborhoods were, um, most affected? Well, twenty-three was the highest, twenty-three and twenty-nine were the highest responses, once again, from our kind of inland southeast, uh, quadrant, and also from the beach area of twenty-three. Um, as you get into the La Nita corridor, it was down to twelve percent. Um, so, the, um, we didn't have a majority of people who were greatly affected or who were negative. Um, but from this, we can see a little bit about who, uh, was most affected, who felt the most negative, and, and where they were. Any questions?
Patrick, uh, if I'm remembering the previous screen, you said that the, uh, the highest percentage of folks who had a negative experience were in the La Nita corridor. And then, uh, in the most recent, in the most recent screen, you're saying that the, um, La Nita corridor had the least impact on livability.
Yeah, so you will see this. If you dig, if you dig deep into the numbers, you'll see, you know, and part of that, I, we, we don't know, we can't ask each individual person, and, and, um, I'm not in a position to say what numbers mean. You know, one thing that I was just thinking is, you know, we can define negative and positive. Each person has a different a, a negative scale. Livability is a little trickier, uh, because, you know, livability has a, a wider range of definitions, so, um, it, it was put there, uh, at request of, of kind of the community. We did that, and, um, uh, so we'll also, we also have live, uh, livability, uh, uh, comments. Uh, Anna Palm will share that that was the response. That was a question, open-ended question that people respond to the most, how would you define the, the ability? So, um, but just numerically, um, this, these are the responses, uh, and to your point, going and looking at this kind of, La Nita corridor, yeah, twelve percent greatly affected versus La Nita corridor, thirty-two percent negative.
That's really fascinating.
Well, you're talking about, uh, if you look at the number of people, and I think that sometimes it can skew the results a little bit. This is eight, the thirty-two percent is eight people. Um, so it, it's a very small, you know, one person answers differently one to the other, and it's going to be real different percentages.
Yeah. And that's why we put these numbers here. We, we want to kind of keep that in perspective, you know, to your point, if one of these is negative, well, let's say differently, if, uh, well, if one of these well, let's say differently, if, uh, well, if one of these negative people have gone positive, this would have been even at something like twenty eight each or something like that, you know, but, but, you know, the, these are, um, we wanted to make sure that the numbers are there and the percentages are there, uh, and put it in visual terms so that, uh, we provide full disclosure on what we know and what we see. We want to let everybody have the opportunity to make, uh, to have their own impression.
Um, Patrick, I had a question. Um, I know this survey, um, was quite similar to the one that was done previously, I think in two thousand nineteen. And did you have in the previous one, and, and you were going to use, use the two surveys comparatively, um, but was this, um, map breakout, um, used in the previous survey?
Let me answer that, Patrick, um, since I was involved with both of them. No, it wasn't. And we also, in the previous survey, didn't break it down into areas. Um, we didn't break it down, uh, as well into full time and part time. We, uh, in, in this particular question, uh, similar results, but we went into a lot more detail in this survey than the previous one.
Thank you, Joe.
Anybody else? So the next question was, uh, impact felt from the two thousand twenty one changes to the short term rental ordinance ten point three. A committee was put together a couple of years ago, uh, that kind of focused on the ordinance itself. Um, and, you know, so we, the question was asked, um, have, have you noticed much? Uh, in, you know, if you, if you look at this, uh, you know, overwhelmingly folks say they hadn't noticed. What's interesting in the slides coming up, uh, they may not notice it, uh, when they think about it in these terms, but, um, we can see that things that had done, uh, that were done were making, uh, a difference. And we can also look at it in terms of who responded. Uh, the folks who noticed the most, uh, were, uh, short term rental owners. They have to deal with a lot of the things that are uh, stipulated in there. So, um, but once again, you know, not, not a whole lot. Um, so, you know, part timers were at eight percent in terms of changes noticed. Full timers noticed, you know, about, about one in five, um, noticed a little bit. So, um, but in general, you know, not, not a lot. It was just a kind of more, also kind of an FYI question. This one was, this one was kind of interesting. So what were the traveling aspects identified with neighboring short term rentals? Uh, so we asked this question. It was basically a multiple chase question with a series of different things. We went through this embedded it with uh, council, council, uh, helped us kind of add things, subtract things, make them more clear. And as we go through it, uh, this is how it breaks out. Um, we basically color coded it just kind of as a visual to show kind of maybe almost four tiers, the highest tiers, the, you know, uh, and, you know, traffic on my street was number one. A noise was, was, was not number one or number two, um, from full timers. Um, interesting, a noise was number one from part timers. Um, but, uh, it went in this order, you know, traffic on my street, general impact on, on neighborhoods in the city, number two. Um, things that, just out of, you know, just my two cents, it's not necessarily in the purview of the short term rental committee to, um, impact those particular things. Um, um, but noise then comes in, parking on my street comes in. Uh, interestingly, parking in front of my house is kind of third in terms of the, the parking aspects. We had parking from my house, parking on my street, you know, traffic on my street. Um, parking in front of my house, I assume would be higher. Uh, um, that is not so, not so much pets here. Interestingly, people didn't see that ten point oh three made a big difference to them. What was interesting is lighting, garbage, kind of hot tubs, different things. Like these are all at the right end of the spectrum, the ones with the least um, concern shown. These are the ones that they focused on the most in ten point oh three. So little things can make a difference, uh, interestingly, um, um, uh, uh, if you look at it, uh, in numeric terms, this is how it comes back from the survey. People had four choices, five choices, no concerns, uh, very occasionally, rarely often highly concerned. That's how we came to weighted averages. And, um, you know, my, some takeaways here are the full time respondents indicated that neighborhood traffic was the greatest. Part timers, as we mentioned, mentioned noise is their greatest. The majority of residents were not highly or often concerned with any of the short term rental issues above. And let, let me just show you what that means is when you, when you ask, um, if you were to like, say, take often and highly concerned and add these up, the highest one was forty percent said often or highly on traffic on my street. It's not like we had often and highly on fifty, uh, or more, but just, just kind of a, a perspective tool. And then finally, um, just for non, um, numbers geeks, weighted averagers, uh, just these numbers from three point one to one point seven are another way to show, uh, how to basically give more weight to, um, answers where people are in the highly concerned range versus no concerns. And so basically the rankings that give weight, uh, from each of the five potential responses as concerns rise. So that's just some background on the process of, of the information we received and then how, how it turned out. Any questions on this one or thoughts?
Well, you know, I just look at like, uh, it looks like a lot of those numbers are pretty close. I mean, three point one to two point nine. I don't, you know, with the numbers being so small, it doesn't seem like that's a huge difference. And I guess my only other comment would be that not all the houses have hot tubs. So, you know, how do you, you know, how do you correspond that into the, the survey?
Yeah. No, and, um, you know, we, we put everything out there. We, you know, um, so we didn't expect everything to be, uh, high on everybody's list. And yeah, to your point, um, there's, and, and Judy's even made a point, by the way, she gets a lot of, uh, um, complaints on hot tubs. So if you have a hot tub near you and it's got um, a house that, uh, has historically been, been allowed to do, um, things that we don't really appreciate, um, that can be, uh, pretty, pretty traumatic. Um, but like you said, not everybody deals with it, but when we have things to deal with, we can maybe get better at doing those things. So. Um, so this was, uh, interesting. Where do you seek help with challenging short term rentals? And we gave a lot of, once again, a lot of options. And there really was no majority, you know, the kind of the, the most, you know, up to almost forty percent said, hey, I'm going to go to the short term rental agent or the owner. Um, lease for about thirty percent, you know, the city was about twenty percent. But what was interesting was, you know, there was a decent amount of people who said, I, I, you know, I'm not sure who to call I, or I don't even want to interact. I don't want to intervene. That's not, that's not my style. It's not my job. I, I don't, I don't feel good about that. So what was good, what was good, what was useful about this was number one, we didn't really seem to have a, a core person or group that people felt comfortable, uh, or knowledgeable about to go to first. That's something we can get better about and something we can do better. And the other thing is we have some like informational, uh, opportunities. So when you ask people, do you know where to find a short term rental, uh, owner or agent contact information, whether it was full timers or part timers? Fifty three percent of part timers said no, thirty eight percent, uh, full timers said no. They're required to have a sign with their phone number, with the contact information on each house. Um, we can, as a group of volunteers can, um, help kind of find ways to share that information in a, in an easier way. Number one, to get this out. And number two, I think, um, you know, I, I would just say historically, neighbors haven't had a reliable city resource to call when a short term rental becomes a challenge. So what is good about this? The timing of this is, you know, uh, the city has, um, uh, approved, um, the position, an FTE for, uh, short term rental code enforcement officers. Uh, they're being hired, uh, to support our neighbors. For the first time, we really do have a point person that can help. Uh, and, uh, what we can do on the, on our short term rental committee side is once again be, um, an informational resource, an educational resource, um, to share. And we have some ideas potentially on that going down the road about how we can share that information with the community. So. Any questions about that? Um, perspectives on cap, short term rental, this is perspectives on, um, basically just to take a step back, the short term rental, uh, capping process right now is, um, based on, in the old days, it was based on seventeen point five percent of housing stock. Uh, we basically froze that at a point which was two hundred and thirty three for all the neighborhoods we showed, with the exception of that one in the middle, the Lanita corridor and the R four area. That area is non capped, you, and those numbers, you know, people can build, people can put STRs in there as man as they want right now. The question was, uh, should the short, should the short term rental cap apply to every neighborhood? And so far, in terms of responses, resoundingly, this one was, yeah, this is something we should probably consider. Um, also taking a step, you know, thinking back to, you know, where were people um, least negative in our least, in our highest density areas, they were least, um, they were tolerating, uh, they didn't have extremely high negative, uh, um, percentages in those areas. This is something worth, uh, taking a look at and going, you know, maybe we find a way to do a citywide process, but just, uh, what we know is that um, people are okay with, um, ex, ex, making a, a, a simpler short term rental, uh, capping process that is consistent uh, for all neighborhoods. If you look at it, um, by group, basically full time renter, full time residents were the, uh, the highest of that group. Part timers were at fifty three, short term rental folks were kind of, um, equally dispersed almost a, among these. But, but this is the full time perspective. Any questions? And just digging deeper into caps and different things like that. And density, we asked, would you be in favor of regulating density proximity limits to short term rental homes? Um, folks, maybe even going back to some of the prior slides were like, I don't know who to contact. I could use some help. Um, folks were saying, yeah, um, I, I don't mind if you all look into ways to, um, to, to deal with this. Um, if you take a look at the different subgroups, seventy seven percent full timers, sixty, fifty nine percent part timers. For term rental folks, it said, uh, seventeen percent yes, uh, to, to the concept of, um, density proximity concepts. Or perspective on caps and limits. Um, how do you feel about the current total? We have two hundred and sixty three when you include, uh, the non capped area of commercial and R four and the two hundred and thirty three from the capped areas. Uh, basically full timers, this was interesting. Uh, full timers said that just a minute and a half, said it was too many. It wasn't, uh, a majority or higher. Um, when you, and it was pretty, it was pretty consistent or similar to, uh, how do you feel about a percentage cap base on total houses? You know, in other words, dealing with, uh, uh, seventeen five percent versus a higher or lower percent, how do you feel about that? About half, there was a, maybe, these are slightly higher, but it's just a, you know, one or two people did it a little bit differently. If you break it down, once again, um, full timers were the most interested and kind of exploring, um, um, or let me say it differently. Um, how, the question is, how do you feel about these things? Um, folks saying too many, um, were the, the folks who said too many, about half of them were full timers. It went to, down to a quarter uh, or thirty a percentage for part timers and, and less than ten percent for, for short term rental owners. For, uh, when we went, we also then went into questions specific to short term rental folks. We asked them a little bit about who they are. And we're almost, we're almost done. By the way, you're, you've done very, very well to make it this far. I'm very impressed with your patience, your resilience. Uh, this is way too much information to deal with and it's not very fun or exciting. Uh, I don't have bells and whistles. My apologies, but we're almost done. Uh, there's only, uh, one, I believe this is the last page. It's very exciting. So, uh, number ten, short term rental owners, what's your background? Well, uh, this was interesting to me, actually. Uh, I thought there were way more agent folks that would be involved, but all, it was about a third of self managed. Seventy four people self manage. I, I didn't realize there were that many, frankly. Uh, so, um, and two thirds were agent managed. Uh, short term rentals, do you find ten point three ordinance to be helpful? About eighty one percent said yes. So, um, you know, some, and then what interestingly, we asked, you know, are there parts of short term rental or, uh, ordinance, uh, ten point three that could be changed? And they said, you know, fifty one percent said, yeah, we do have some things. And what's interesting is when you get to the comments, we got, there were two hundred ish people that responded for short term rental, uh, related who owned or agented them. We got over a hundred comments, uh, some really interesting and good ideas, uh, about ten point one. Um, so thi- these are going to be some potential resources to utilize. So, you know, takeaways, ten point three appears to be helpful document. Um, we may have the ability to incorporate, uh, uh, you know, guidance to bolster efforts for our new short term rental code officer. And we have a lot of input from owners that can maybe help along with that process. We've also, um, reached out, uh, recently and in the past with, uh, Leila and Judy, um, and we see this as kind of a partnership and, uh, you know, we, we, uh, would look forward to, you know, any of these ideas that come here, we would hope to touch base with them, you know, ensure things are feasible, ensure things make sense, you know. Uh, it, uh, I think we're all, we're all on one team here and, uh, the, the more we work together, the, the easier and the better this is. So that, uh, these basically eleven pages of slides and the, and the data slide to begin are the summary of basically the entirety of the survey that was given in April, uh, approximately two months ago. That's what I have. Um, if, let me know if you have any questions. I'll say this, feel free to write things down. Feel free to let this ruminate. Feel free to ponder this. Uh, we, we don't have to get answers out today. You know, we can talk about this, uh, over time. You can email us. Um, we, I will, if you have any questions, um, I, I, I will answer them right away. And if I don't know the answer, I will look into it and get it for you. And secondarily, uh, after this, we have Anna Palm, uh, who will provide, uh, information on the, the commentary responses that we'll provide. And so before we go to that, any questions on the numbers?
Yeah, I want to, uh, just ask, uh, the council, would you prefer to ask number questions now or wait uh, for Anna Palm's presentation and, uh, do it as a combined thing or as we went along as you did with this one? What's your pleasure?
Um, I, I felt comfortable asking my questions as we went along, so I'm, I'm fine to proceed. Anyone else?
Yeah, I'm good too.
Yeah, it makes sense.
Yeah. Thanks, Patrick. That was, uh, that was really interesting.
Very, we've done a lot of information to process.
Well, and that will be up on the, on the website so that you can download it and really go over it in detail. Is that correct?
That, well, e- e- that was a, a question to the council, but that's, that was our intent to, to put Patrick's presentation, Anna Palm's presentation, and also the entire survey results from Survey Monkey. So if someone wants to go through the thousands of questions and look at all the answer, uh, thousands of answers and look at them all, then yeah, sure. I mean, there's nothing, uh, proprietary or secret about it. So we'd like to put this presentation plus the entire data dump in, uh, on the website.
I think that's a good idea, an excellent idea. Uh, Leila, is that something we can do?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, thanks. Good work, Patrick. Thank you.
Thanks, Patrick. Um,
Yeah, I'm comfortable with it being on the website too. And I think that, uh, you're right, Joe, someone probably will go over all fourteen.
Yeah. Which is, which is great. I mean, Good suggestions. And if they do, we'll listen. Um, uh, has the, uh, the question, uh, analysis. So I'm going to let him take over.
Yeah, thank you, Joe. Thank you, Patrick. Um, you know, quantitative results like Patrick shared give us a sense of how many people feel a certain way. And they give us a numerical ratings. But it's very important to know that we, tell us why. And qualitative results allow us to understand the why. Qualitative comments allow respondents to share the specific reasons for their ratings. And then based on their comments, provide us more insight on what to address. As background, the STR committee, we formed a subcommittee made up of Cheryl, Ogbon, Jill Petty and myself to review the thousands of written comments and then report on common themes. And our job, as Joe and Patrick have said, is simply to listen and report, you know? At this stage, we've not tried to assess the accuracy of the statement. We are simply reporting what people said. The next step will be to dive deeper to better understand concerns to be addressed either through education or changes to STR rules or changes to city rules or enforcement. So all of that will come next. So all of that will come next. So let me start with my presentation. I share my screen. Can everybody see it?
Yes.
Thank you. So here's some overall information. As Patrick reported, we have full-time residents, two-hundred-and-twenty-nine, thirty-eight percent of the people responded. Part-time, these are estimates, by the way. Part-time residents, a hundred-and-sixty-seven respondents, which we estimate are fourteen percent of the people. And then S T Rs itself, two-hundred-and-eleven responded, which is, represents about seventy-eight percent of the respondents. Now, many of the survey residents provided written comments, which is great, you know. Um, I'm just going to shrink this a little bit. Um, we had great feedback for the livability question and the comments on the S T Rs mirrored the quantitative results. And many suggestions on managing livability and growth. By the way, I can't see anybody, so if somebody has a question or a comment, please speak up. Um, I'm not sure how to see everyone, so. Uh, I can't, right? So just speak up, please. Um, overall, a level of frustration was expressed on violation enforcement of sit, S T R or city rules. Now, these are, they make comments like make all the S T R company but never receive any help. Fireworks was a mentioned quite a few times. Homes rented under the table, too many cars parked, and we saw that in Patrick's numbers. And unfortunately, dogs and poop. Uh, visitors bring dogs, et cetera. Uh, some of these things are not necessarily S T R issues, which is why at the top I've said enforcement of S T R or city rules, because not necessarily S T Rs. And there's a recognition at the same time of the positive role S T Rs or tourists play in the community. There were comments about how it supports local businesses, major portion of S, Manzanita's revenues. And then S T R enhances livability and brings life to a community. There's also recognition of the town's growth as a tourist destination. And then suggestions on how to manage livability. You know, comments like natural growth of our city may bring new problems. We need to brainstorm ways to educate tourists about being respectful of the environment and the community. And comments like, uh, we appreciate very much the efforts of the survey. Well done, leadership for listening. And I enjoy the business tourists bring, I enjoy the business tourists bring to my community. And of course, summer is terrible with cars, noise, and people. So recognition of some of the, some of the challenges we have. We talked about how would you define livability as a question? And not surprisingly, the questions actually are, the answer though, very common across the board. Uh, not having to peaceful, quiet, and safe, and not having to worry about who is next door. Peaceful enjoyment, quiet street, little light, and noise pollution, and dogs and children under supervision. Cleanliness, safe walkable roads, no speeding cars, and good safe walking. No surprises here. And the neighborhood feeling, neighbors we know well, people respect each other and pitch in when needed, and being able to borrow a cup of sugar. Also vibrancy is part of livability. Vibrant businesses and engaged and supportive community and events like the July Fourth Parade or Farmer's Market, et cetera. But having a vibrant location is part of livability. And then finally, restaurants and grocery and services, ability to access local establishments, goods and services. Those all were some of the, some of the comments about what is livability? So the next question was, do S T Rs affect livability? Now, I'm going to share a little later on, uh, some summary comments on some of the questions. But first, we did a word cloud for some aggregate responses. Now, if you're not familiar with the word cloud, it's a tool that counts the number of times each word was mentioned by a respondent and then displays the word by size. The larger the size, the more the mentions. So here's the word cloud for full-time residents. Who said, do, does, the question was, do S T Rs of nearby affect your livability? We already saw the numerical answers that Patrick did, but here are some of the words that people wrote. And also a lot of comments here, street, dogs, and unfortunately, there's not a good way to sort of segregate out this. I'm not sure what street means, why, I mean, sure it's mentioned many times, but how do you interpret that? And you look at the part-time residents, similar things. Do S T Rs nearby affect your livability? The word cloud displayed things like parking, noise, coming and going, driveway, visitors, et cetera. The question then was, what concerns do you have about nearby S T Rs? And we did another word cloud on that. Full-time residents mentioned about concerns about near, nearby S T Rs. S T R was the biggest word in here mentioned, but that doesn't mean anything. And I'll speak to, how do you judge and how do you interpret some of this information? So while word clouds can be helpful, it's hard to get any actionable information from the word clouds. So we summarized some common themes, uh, from the actual comments. And, and I'm going to show you some of those. Now, it's important to keep in mind that just because something is mentioned there, doesn't mean that it was a common, commonly expressed thing. It might, it might have been a feeling expressed by just one or more respondents, but it addressed some of the key issues that we've already identified, like in this case, parking. Parking more cars, cars than allowed. That seemed to be fairly common among many people. Uh, issues about too many five or six cars or sometimes up to ten cars at one house. And I'm not sure whether these are common issues, old issues, current issues. And quite frankly, sometimes, if you notice, I've put at the top, S T Rs and other homes. Because in some responses, people were not sure whether it was an S T R or just a part-time or a full-time resident having a party. So it's, it sort of gets mixed up in, in those things. Uh, noise and music after quiet time. We heard the word noise in many of the comments that Patrick talked about. And the noise can come from many different things. It can come from people, cars, movements. But people also said, you know what? S T R occupants of the house on my street are respectful. People on vacation are here to have a good time. They're louder and up late. Some renters are quiet and mellow, and others feel entitled to behave as if they are in a party zone. And my only bad experience is the local homeowners' children disrespect, disrespecting the rules when they're in town. Fifty percent of the Manzanita homes are second homes and not regulated. Fraternity parties, bachelor parties, family reunions far exceed the capacity of those houses and create chaos. And often, S T Rs are blamed. S T R regulations only cover twenty percent of homes. Oh no, works hard to have tenants be quiet and follow rules. So quite a mixture of comments, uh, that we picked up or people wrote down. Overcrowding, party homes. Uh, there were, obviously, if there is a party home next to you and they are having some of these issues, it's no fun place to be. I don't know whether some of these are current, whether they've been reported, or whether these are old issues or new issues. But these are the kinds of things that we'll have to dive into a little bit to understand better. And hopefully find and determine if there's a, which house, if there's an issue of enforcement or if it's a, what the issue is. Um, they could just be a few bad apples that we, that we need to address and deal with. We just don't know. We will determine that. Dogs bark parking and poop. And then many comments about increased dog poop and bark, parking, S T R visitors and general visitors. Increased traffic, speaking about cleaning crews, rental crews, speeding tourists. Lights. Uh, much improved after ordinance ten-point-three. And there were a couple of comments that reflected the fact that S T Rs is not following the rules, uh, across the street, but there's also a full-time residence that's has bright lights, night, lights on all night. So night sky rules are meaningless unless all residences are required to follow. So these are some things we will come back to at some point, to the council, to the S T R committee, whatever, to come back and say, what, these are some things that you may want to address. Compliance and enforcement. Not sure how to do it. Maybe the answer is that many people did not know who to call or what the issue is. I think the enforcement officer will be a big help and will make a big difference to this and, uh, as to why some people feel that they are, they do not get uh, the issue that they have raised, or S T R owners or agents are not being helpful in their, in, if there's any issue. So now the next step for, for the, this group will be to review all the comments and questions to determine what kind of follow-up, if there are communication gaps. And then if it's a S T R committee issue or a city council domain, and then come up with next steps for implementation of suggestions to improve livab- livability. I'm going to stop sharing and then try to answer any questions you might have. Now that I can see everyone again.
Um, Anna Palm, I, I, um, really respected the fact that you included other houses along with S T R houses, because we don't always know. And some of the problems that we have with S T Rs, um, they've addressed them already and fixed the issues, but the neighbors across the street don't have S T Rs, but they have lighting issues going on all the time. So will your, uh, committee, uh, maybe this is a question for Joe, but will your committee kind of broaden out beyond S T Rs or, and to include maybe changes in the ordinance that would affect the whole city as opposed to just, uh, the business entity?
Yeah, I'll, I'll say something, and Joe, you might want to add to it. It depends on the issue. Uh, as an example, lighting. That's common sense to me that says you, to apply a rule for twenty percent of the homes and not apply for all the homes, doesn't make sense.
Right.
So either you have it for everyone or nobody.
Yeah, right.
So there we can come back to the city and say, you know, guys, we should rethink this. This is our recommendation. It's up to you to decide.
Okay.
So we'll, we'll go piece by piece and then come back with our recommendations after our conversation and say, what, what suggestions do we have for the council to take? That apply all the city or, and then what suggestions do we have for just S T Rs?
Yeah, um, yeah, I think Anna Palm said it well. It just depends on the issue and sometimes we will and sometimes we won't. Um, while you're asking other questions, can you, um, I want to share something on the screen, um, so if you can, in sharing, um, but I, we'll take other questions first.
I guess I had a quick question for the council. Um, so this is a, a long time coming. A lot of information comes out. I was just curious if anybody had any first impressions or takeaways?
Uh, I, I do. Um, well, first of all, it's, it's a great effort. I really appreciate all the work that has gone into it. And I do believe that it is a significantly better effort than the last time, and that's not a criticism of last time. I think obviously you would expect to build on and improve on the previous effort. So I think you did a good job and I really appreciate it. Uh, I do worry a little bit about sort of a narrative, uh, getting off the ground that, well, we did the survey and it turns out that there's really not much of a problem with, uh, S T Rs as they impact livability. And I, I caution against that, uh, because uh, while the survey is definitely informative on that point, and I, I definitely am curious about some of the responses I saw. Um, it does appear to me that, uh, you know, roughly three-quarters of the full-time residents who participated in the survey have, uh, two or more S T Rs, uh, right nearby, and, and a quarter of those people have had a negative impact. And that's not nothing. That's, that's a chunk of people and uh, it would be one thing if the city had a passive role with S T Rs, but we have a very, uh, active role with S T Rs as both a regulator of them and a, uh, a recipient of revenue from, from them. So, so I don't think, uh, even though the numbers are less than a lot of people may have, uh, predicted, I don't think they're negligible. I think they're a significant number, uh, that still bears, you know, careful uh, uh, treatment by both the committee and by, by council. Um, and then the other thing to, uh, bear in mind is that, and this is frustrating and I, I wish it were different, but, um, the participation rate in the survey among full-time residents, uh, was significant, but it was also significantly lower than the participation rate of S T R owners. Uh, S T R owners, by and large, most of them took the survey. You can't say that about full-time residents. Um, and so I'm just, I'm just, I'm appreciative of all the information that's coming in, but I'm, I'm not jumping the gun. I'm just trying to assess it, uh, and I, I think it's a great, uh, it's more than a starting point, but it's a great, it's a great opportunity for the committee to, to go forward and to work on those solutions that we're not supposed to jump to, so I'm not doing that yet. But, uh, but I do think that the numbers, uh, even if a little surprising, uh, they still tell a story and I'm going to spend some time with them.
Jerry, I, I, I think everyone on the committee agrees with you a hundred percent. Um, and as I said in the very beginning, it doesn't really matter how many people said, I'm highly affected, and how many people said, I'm not. It's, are there issues we can make better? And, and I think that's what our committee is all about. It doesn't, I mean, if ten people said, um, hot tubs are a problem, getting back to, to Brad, um, because there are only ten hot tubs in town. Still, if we can have some kind of way to minimize the effect of hot tubs for those ten people, that's a good thing. Um, so really, is it, it, it isn't, even though we didn't get all the full-timers in a, as higher percentage as the part-timers, it, it's kind of like an exit poll. We got, I think, a pretty good idea of what some of the issues are, and that's what's important. So I agree with you.
Okay.
Um, Joe, I had a question. Um, I know, uh, in Cannon Beach, the S T R committee reports to the planning commission. And I just, I just wonder, as your next step, I mean, today we're just really looking at, um, the data. Um, but the next step is looking at solutions. And the way you had the zones broken out in the city, I thought was, was really very, very interesting. Um, do you see tying in with the planning commission and, and zoning, uh, changes, options like that down the road?
I suppose it's a possibility. I think the way we handle it is that we have um, Phil Mannan on our committee as an ad hoc member, so that we can, if there are items that pertain to planning, we can get Phil's input and also he can take it back to the planning commission. Um, I don't know if you listened to the, uh, Tillamook County Short-Term Rental Meeting last night. Um, but one of the things that they have always harped on in the year and a half that they've been working is that as soon as you start to talk about S T Rs and land use, it's a whole different issue than S T Rs and ordinances and policies. So, um, I, I think the way we're doing it is better than Cannon Beach.
Okay.
Um, I'm just, I'll go, oh, sorry, Joe.
Go ahead.
Well, mine was just a numbers question, so Patrick, this one might be for you. Uh, we, we saw that we had, well, it's sort of for Jerry. Um, we have six-hundred residents um, and two-hundred and something filled out the surveys, but that doesn't really equate to homes. Um, so looking at the short-term renters or rentals, people that manage them, those could be two per rental, so we don't actually have a those could be two per rental. So we don't actually have a solid number of, even though 200 people filled out that survey and we have 260 rentals, some of those could be couples and overlap. So we don't necessarily have a clear look at well, a full number there. I don't know if that makes that much of a difference, but.
I, I think that's a, I think that's a really important question or important point. And I, I'm very hesitant to say, you know, we have this percent of respondents in the data area. Um, it's, it can be misleading, you know, it's really important to, to remember that this wasn't a, a random survey. This wasn't a controlled survey. These numbers are reflective of who responded and they can't be extrapolated out into the whole population. Um, we have a significant number, but we have to be very careful about saying this is what full-time people believe. This is what short-term rental believe. That's, that's not a fair use of, of these numbers. And, you know, to your point, you know, and, and this is also, you know, a little bit to Jerry's point, you know, we have over 200 some, um, responses from short-term rental owners. But, you know, that number you have to be careful with, right? When a owner involves two spouses and they both respond, that, that number, you know, it's not necessarily that two, uh, that, that many of 263 houses responded. I would say the number is lower in terms of person, percentage of houses. So we have to be careful with the numerator and the denominator. So I, you know, I would say, um, we got a significant number of, uh, short-term rental owners. We got a significant number of full-time residents. We got a lower number of part-time residents, but to say what that percentage is, is, is unfair and unnecessary.
I think that goes back to Joe, like we have some data and we have some items that we can work on.
I think that's exactly right. I think I would view this, the results of this as information. Uh, this is what we're hearing. This is what people are saying. We need to investigate further and, and not get into 2% here, 5% there, et cetera. That doesn't matter. I think we just want to listen and what's happening and what people are saying and investigate it and find out. The more we can do to improve livability, the, I think the more successful the whole town will be, but that's our mission of the STR committee.
Yeah. And I, I think we are all, uh, all of us on the committee, uh, chomping at the bit because we all have ideas. And, uh, we're just, we're ready now. We're meeting, uh, Friday at 10 o'clock, the same time as your planning commission meeting. Sorry about that. Um, pick one. Um, but we, we are going to brainstorm. Um, we're going to first talk about what do we want to do? Who, what's most important to each of us and what can, what, what can we do? Um, and then, and then get started on some of the topics that we come up with. I will give you a hint. Mine's education.
Um, Joe, you have kind of a timeline, um, by when you think, uh, you would come to council with some possible solution, uh, ideas?
Um, we've talked about it a little bit. I, I, I think when we had the work group before, we had a time and we were going to come with all of our recommendations at once. And I think we're not going to do that this time. I think the, it, it's, I think it will work better if we, you know, get a couple of them and say, okay, here's some that we'd like to start with. And then several months later, here's some more that we'd like to start with. We have some things that we, we have a deadline, uh, on the cap of Leila, I might get this wrong, April 2025? Yeah, April 24, April 2024. So.
No. Twenty-five?
Yeah. So so we definitely want to come up with some things, uh, some significant changes before we get to the end of that cap. Um, and so that's a far out deadline, but, but I would say within, I don't know, six months, we, we will at least have some ideas that we will have brought to you and you will have made some comments and decisions on.
My view and always in these things is you look at all the issues, then go for the low hanging fruit that you can implement quickly. So that's going to be part of the process here that Joe was referring to. Put down all these things, prioritize them and say, hey, what can we accomplish quickly? And then some things we know that will just take long, even though we want to accomplish them just because of the process the council and the cities have to go through to whatever, make any changes. So let's deal with some of the low hanging fruit first as quickly and then keep moving in that direction.
I, I want to show you something. Michael Duncan is on the call and he's our, um, our, our map maker extraordinaire. Um, and my question is, Brad, is this better?
Oh yeah, it's a lot better. Thanks.
Oh, good. Thank you, Michael.
You don't have to change it for me, but.
Yeah, well, he did. Uh, this one, by the way, also shows, uh, the sentiment on, uh, are you highly affected, not affected, moderately affected um, by, uh, STRs near you in the, um, in the percentage underneath, this is the number of STRs in each uh, area and then the, the positive neutral or negative responses. So it's, uh, this, this chart will also be uh, included in, uh, on the website. But it will be in a colorblind persons.
That's great. Thank you, Brad.
Thank you, Michael.
Uh, thank you, Michael is right.
Uh, Joe, I just make a couple of comments, you know, um, when you're thinking, you know, you're looking at this, you're looking at so many different variables and I appreciate that you're, um, looking at commonalities and, um, issues. You know, you can, when people are taking a survey, you can also think, you know, what's, what's that person's experience that day, right? You know, um, might have a short-term renter next to you that just had a, a giant party and you're kind of in a bad mood and you might therefore, you know, rank things lower. You might be having a bad day, uh, in general. Um, you know, I can speak from my own experience that, um, you know, other things on your street may be bothering you, um, and making noise and, um, creating some of the same issues that, um, that we, uh, often contribute to short-term rentals. So uh, I appreciate that you kind of a lot of variables, um, and I appreciate that you're looking at, um, commonalities. And when we look at livability, um, there's a lot of, a lot of things that contribute to our livability, not just uh, as far as short-term rentals, but, um, as far as, uh, neighbors, construction noise, um, a lot of different things. So I appreciate that you're looking at those, uh, commonalities.
I think one of the things that the short-term rental group will do this time that, uh, ten-three, uh, we didn't take the time to do, and that is to work closely with staff to make sure that by the time the suggestions come to council, they are vetted so that they can be implemented if the, if the council chooses to do that. And I think that's a partnership uh, that's going to be really helpful as we move forward.
Yeah.
The other thing is if you have any interest, join, you know, come join the short-term rental task force. Joe is really good about pulling in, uh, comments from, from the participants, uh, and really looks for input. And that's been a very productive. I think part of the livability issue actually came from a participant that was at a short-term rental committee meeting and shared that interest. And, uh, so the more you can, the more, that if you have a high interest, the more you can participate. I think you'll find your, uh, views are really listened to.
Uh, Joe, I had a question, uh, uh, about the, uh, I guess the scope of your committee. I, I was listening to a um, STR owner the other day. Um, they self-manage. And it, the concern was the rate increase on, on their license and their fees, uh, things going up by triple. Um, is that whole pricing factor part of your scope as well?
No, no, that's administrative. That is, has nothing to do with short-term rental committee. And it's a good question, Mayor, because that does come up quite often, but it is not in the purview of the short-term rental committee.
Okay. Good clarification. Thank you.
Uh, well, I, I'd like to ask a related question because one of the things that, uh, can affect policy in several, uh, uh, ways, I think, is the different, uh, nature of short-term rental enterprises. There are 250 plus individual enterprises that comprise this, um, aggregate, uh, industry in our town. Uh, so it's easy to think of the industry and get a sense of how much revenue it generates and how much business it generates and how many people it brings to town. But then if you look at the individual operators, there are some real different entities out there, uh, and it would be helpful to counsel, um, if we better understood the, the differences, if there truly are uh, some mom and pop shops that have, uh, a couple of, uh, weekends a year or a couple of weekends, uh, every other month or whatever versus, uh, a place that's rented out 300 nights a year. And so in your work with Judy and in the work you've done on the survey and in your, uh, just the common knowledge you have across the committee, uh, are you in a position to shed any better light on that question for council to give us a better idea? Uh, like one of the things that came up in the survey that I found interesting and Patrick was surprised by it is the the number of, uh, folks that self-manage versus the number of folks that are, uh, professionally managed. And when I saw that number, my first thought was, I wonder if there's a different qualitatively, are there different kinds of owners who self-manage versus owners who pay for management services? And it would just be better for us as a city uh, to manage this industry and to, uh, regulate its, uh, individual operators if we had a better appreciation of the differences among them. So I'm not, I'm not trying to create more work for you, but I'm, I'd be really happy to be better informed about that if you guys can do it.
I think Jerry, if the, if the, if that's the wishes of the council, I think what we can do, again, we don't want to um, get into administrative stuff, but we are volunteers and we're worker bees and I, and, and we, as you can see, we have people who like to analyze things um, more than just the two guys you just saw. We've got a whole team full. Um, and so if if the, if the request is can we get more detail for the city so that they have better ideas of what they're talking about? In other words, how many of them rent, how many number of days, how many of them are self-managed? Um, I think that's some information that we could gather, um, that could help. I don't think we would come up with um, recommendations again on, on, on administrative costs, but we can certainly uh, delve into those kind of numbers. And I think it would be something that, uh, we'd like to do.
Well, well, don't go do anything just yet, but, uh, but I'm going to talk more with, uh, Leila and, and Judy and, and maybe others on council to figure out if there is a, an appetite for that. I just think it would be uh, good information. I mean, some of it we already have or some of it is accessible, uh, but if there is a role for, for the committee, we'll, we'll let you know because I do think it would serve us all well.
Yeah. I'd like to add to your list, Jerry.
Yeah, that, I would too. So I, I think there's a sense on the council that that would be really helpful, Joe.
I, I, I agree with that. I think that information is very helpful, uh, to, just to get some data, facts, how many times is our STR rented? What's the average stay? How many people, you know, all those kinds of things would be nice to have. And I think this, in the forms that the city has and on the reporting, we could probably gather that, but that's a decision that the council will have to make, I think, as to if we modify those forms on the administrative side. So.
Yeah, we. If you can get us, if you guys can get us the data, we will definitely look at it. And if you look at the qualitative data that we've already received, there are several comments from the short-term rental folks and they were mom and pop shop type comments, which were, you know, I just rent this out. You know, to my, I, they, they weren't saying, uh, I rent this out to my family. Um, the, and I didn't want to break the rules. So I got an MCA license and I just do this and I, and I do, and, uh, only do a few, you know, days per year. And now my, my, uh, license has gone up, you know, fourfold up to 800 something dollars. And, and it's like, I mean, like I'm following the rules and this is happening to me. And so not only can we look at, um, the details if the city is willing to, uh, provide those for us uh, and, and kind of put it in a, in a nice kind of clean format for you all to look at. I mean, there are opportunities as well, you know, to help out some of those folks in our community who are doing it right. You know, that, that small kind of niche, uh, and we can provide ideas on that as well.
So it would be really interesting to get, uh, Judy and Leila's perspective on that in terms of the amount of work that that would take. Um, I, I, I think we need to kind of balance that because we are getting a little bit into the administrative area, but let's, let's, uh, maybe the committee could speak with Leila or maybe Leila has a comment on it right now.
And before Leila even comments, I don't see it as something that we make Leila and, or even ask Leila and Judy to do. That, if you want it done, we can figure out a way to do it without taking staff.
Using administration. Okay. That'd be great.
Yeah, I can just briefly share that we don't collect information on how many nights do you rent and for how much or any of that information, because you also have third parties that manage that as well. So um, that's a pretty big undertaking. Um, what we do have is we collect taxes. So we can use, you know, we can tell you kind of who's paying what or, well, we can only ag, we can only disaggregate the information to a certain level also. So we have to also keep that in mind, um, because there's certain privacy issues and so forth that we have to be cognizant of. So um, we can sort of provide some data, I think, on how much taxes are provided and maybe tranche that, but in terms of like detailed utilization and overnight stays and all of that, like we don't, we don't collect that.
Yeah, I see it more as something that we, we ask the STR owners directly. You know, we figure out what we want to find out and, and we would do the work and, and take it off the staff. I don't think it's something that the staff needs to be doing.
At the same time, if we, if we had access vetted for privacy of the lowest echelon of taxpayers, that's the easiest way to just go, hey, we know the 10 lowest or we know how many are in this amount below X. We, we could easily figure out how many houses, uh, do less than 50 days or something like that. I mean, it would be based, estimate based, but based on those tax numbers, we could, we could figure out. That's up to, that's up to, that's up to Leila and we'll do what, we will do with it, what, what we, uh, what we're given.
I, I'm, I'm kind of curious, they, um, you know, it's a major contributor to, uh, to the revenue of the city. And I think in a neighborhood, being next to an STR that's sort of a mom and pop operation is a very different experience than one of the big national or international, um, companies. So it seems to me, um, starting to make that distinction between the two, I mean, what, I mean, I, I suspect that your committee will also look at ways to support these mom and pop, uh, STR groups so that they feel like they can come to you with, um, some of their problems and, and get some, um, possible solutions also going forward. Is that, is that accurate?
I'm not sure because I, I don't, um, we have purposely, we don't have a direct email, for instance. Um, because we don't, as a committee, we don't really want complaints coming directly to us. Um, especially about things like, I don't like my rates. Um, I'm having a problem with, uh, you know, XYZ vacation rental. Um, and that, that's really more administrative and, and for Judy and the staff. So, um, I think if we hear complaints about one particular topic and it's something that we can help with, that's what we're there for is to offer that support. So I'm, I'm not sure quite how to answer.
Okay, that, I think that answers it, Joe. I think that does. I, I agree with you. There's a lot that falls into administration. Um, thank you.
Um, I will say I got a email this morning that just warmed my cockles. Um, I will say I got a email this morning that just warmed my cockles. Uh, one thing that didn't was seeing how many people said that, uh, they didn't see that the changes in 10-3 made any difference. Um, but, uh, one woman said, but that's education. One woman, uh, who wrote to me this morning said that she was driving down the street a couple of weeks ago and she saw a whole bunch of garbage outside, uh, a short-term rental house. And so she looked for the number on the side of the house. She called them. It was Vacasa. She said there was a bunch of garbage. And when she came back an hour later, it was all cleaned up and the garbage was put away and the can was put on the side of the house and she was happy. And it was like, it works. And then her other comment was if we can, if we can get people to, uh, follow the process and get results, then we can learn how to coexist.
Sounds right. That's great.
Yeah. Jenny, you said you had something to add to our list.
Well, Jerry's list. I, I would like, I was, I was kind of surprised by Patrick when he pointed out that the average size sleeps 10. That's a lot of people. And so I'd be interested to see like, what are the size, what are the sizes of, um, the vacation rentals that we have in town?
And just, you know, the, the list, I actually took the list directly from the city website. Uh, Judy lists every single one and, uh, a contact name and the, um, the occupancy. So like if you, and you can, um, you can sort it. So you can sort it by, uh, occupancy number. So you can see that I think 18 might be the highest, but there's all, I don't know, there's less than a dozen that are over, you know, that are over 12, something like that. So it's interesting. Uh.
That's also education. You can do it on our website already.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Sorry, Joe.
I didn't know that. I, I learned.
Is, is there anything else you'd like to, uh, um, leave us with, Joe or, uh, Patrick or Anna Paul?
Uh, no, um, I, I thank you all for listening to all our, our data. And again, we're really looking forward to saying, okay, here's what I want to do. Um, and we've been avoiding that for a year now. Um, so I think we're all excited about getting to that point.
Yeah. Thank you. Well, it's, uh, hard work and, um, collaborative. And, uh, I, I think the results were, uh, pretty darn interesting. Some surprises there for sure. Um, council, is there anything else that you would like to add, uh, before we adjourn?
Nope.
Nope.
Thanks for the effort. Very good.
Pardon?
Just thanking them for the effort. I really appreciate it.
Absolutely.
Very much. All right. Well.
It's actually a colorblind.
Yeah. Learn something new about.
Thank you, Michael.
Michael, Michael did that in real time. That was.
He did that in real time. Very good, Michael. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Uh, Leila, do you have anything to add before we go?
No.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much for your time and all of you who, uh, joined us, uh, today. And, um, we will adjourn this meeting at 3:54.
Thank you.
Thank you.